All right, it is 5:33 on Thursday, October 3, and we are ready to start the City of College Place workshop meeting. So before we begin, can we all please stand and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance? Would you be able to... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will take a moment of silence and reflection, and I'd like to please ask us that we all please keep in our thoughts the family of the Wallowala Deputy King who has passed away. Thank you. All right, for the record, we also like to excuse the absence of Councilmember Selby, who is not going to be in attendance today, and Councilwoman Nyhagen. All right, before we start with our workshop items, we do have a guest. Tom Stokes would like to make a presentation to the City of College Place and the City Council. Mr. Stokes?
Would you like to do that?
Come on in, yeah, come on up right here. Right there.
My name's Tom Stokes, and I've worked with Fisherwood Trust, class of 2013, and we helped with the Wallowala Splice Pad. We provided seating and shade structures and those kind of things. Anyway, it was a real treat to go by there, but it was hot four weeks ago, and wow, there's a lot of kids playing in the splice pad, and it was really cool. But I wasn't able to attend the first presentation. We have some funds left over, and those funds were donated to you folks to continue your quest for the same similar project. Anyway, we were given a gold shovel as part of the groundbreaking, and wanted to pass this shovel on to the City of College Place with our best wishes, and it'll be fun to see it active, and bless your endeavors.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll have many more gold shovels.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
You bet.
Let me get a photo, I'm slow, I'm slow. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, fantastic. It'll be fun to see you, yeah. And they live about three blocks away from Lions Park.
Oh, good, and you'll be able to hear some of the cheering going on as they're playing in there. You'll be able to hear some of the cheering going on as they're playing in there. All right, let's move on. We do have first item is Mr. Ricard on the Unified Development Code update.
Yes, thank you. So I'm not going to go into depth on the development code because we'll have Greg Dorn back next week at council meeting to really go into greater detail. But what we've been provided thus far is everything that has been provided, that was provided at the public hearing, the comments that were provided at the public hearing, the comment letters we received beforehand, and there's a history of when the planning commission met. They met about eight times over the course of a little over a year. The public outreach we did, the notifications, stuff so on and so forth. And of course, you have the draft. We're continuing to tweak it here and there, primarily for, you know, legal reasons, as it's come through review by REE. So the way the recommendation was made by the planning commission is that there would be some tweaks here and there to make this legal, so to speak. So we should have those draft ordinance for you guys at the next meeting. I think that's the plan. It's still in review, so... But I can answer any questions about the code if you'd like right now, or if you want to wait until next Tuesday to get into that, and we can do it then as well. But it's been quite a process, so...
Do you have any questions? Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to hear this. Does this address... What's the timing for the... Is it rezoning for the small homes or for the additional...
It addresses accessory dwelling units. It does address the tiny home, and thus far, we're continuing to treat tiny homes as like a park model. They're licensed through Department of Labor and Industry, so it falls more into a classification of an RV, or the tiny home on wheels. But you will be able to, if this is approved, build an accessory dwelling unit that would be small in size, and some people call those tiny homes as well.
So there's not a per se rezoning, like City of Wallowala did the process a year or two ago, and they're... Is that different to what we're...
So we did it a little differently when we adopted our comprehensive plan. We consolidated the R-60 and the R-75 into one zone. So now we have... You can build a duplex in any zone, and once this is adopted, Wallowala add that the accessory dwelling use isn't allowed use in that residential zone. We just call it single-family residential now.
Okay.
There's no R-60 or R-75. So the zoning was already approved, but we had to... We still had to revise the permitted and accessory uses.
Okay. What have we heard from Wallowala? What has been their experience? Do we... And I'm not... That's a different situation, my place is tight, but their expansion of accessory dwelling code, have you heard...
I haven't heard anything negative, or, I mean, it's pretty new to them, and I don't think it's too soon to tell, you know, the results of that. This also will address vacation rentals, the RBOs.
Yeah.
It will continue to allow them, but we'll regulate them. We'll have some processes in place so that we can address fire life safety issues, also address as much as possible the nuisance side of it, you know, occasionally we deal with complaints, so we're going to require that the caretaker, the person that's responsible for maintaining that unit or leasing it out, we have to have a local contact, and that number will have to be posted by the front door. We'll have to know the layout, provide us with the layout. There'll be annual inspection for fire life safety, make sure that the carbon dioxide and smoke detectors, and make sure that they're paying the lodging tax.
I'm sorry, here we go. Here it goes. Many times there's an application, the person that's going to rent has to fill out an application that's on file with the city, decide who's going to be their license plate number. Are we going that far?
We don't do that right now. Basically, we get a business license request, and we just kind of know, we issue them the license.
But for each additional, for new rentals...
Oh, for new rentals?
Yes.
Like just a longer than 30 days?
So longer than a rental here in town, I don't have to fill out... Basically, it's an application that's on file with the city. We're not going...
No, not...
Not an application, it's more of a...
Not for rental, like 30 days or longer, no.
Yeah, okay.
But for vacation rentals, they will have to get a permit from the city.
Yeah, the owner.
The owner, right, the operator.
Okay, okay.
I know that we're not specifically talking about vacation rentals, but I also have a question on that. How many are we up to that you know from the City of College Place?
Depending on the season, we've tracked around 20 to 28.
So it's been about the same?
Yeah.
There's not been...
It's been about the same. We are in the IT budget, we are proposing that we'll have... There's a company out there that can track those very thoroughly, and so we're proposing that for at least, you know, five years, we'll probably want to have some software like that so we can really get a good handle on how many are out there and catch the ones that are flying under the radar.
What about any of the concerns that, from some of these letters, that people are concerned about definitions not being clear? You know, certain wordings, like I saw one letter, I believe it was manufactured homes?
We've addressed that, yeah, the history on manufactured homes. They used to be, when they first came out, they were mobile homes, and then, I think it was in '73, somewhere in the '70s, the industry changed and the standards were raised so that they were more energy efficient, more like what a single-family home would be, so then that's when they were changed, started calling manufactured homes. And then now, today, in addition to manufactured homes, you have modular homes where you actually take pieces and you might build a two-story building or something with modular. So those, the definitions are, we've taken another look at them and as REE to make sure that they're in line with the way the state defines them.
Okay.
Because we're not making these definitions up ourselves. We just want to make sure that it's, we're consistently using them to lend the terminology throughout the codes. And it's easy to slip up and use the wrong word.
Okay.
Is there any plan to cap these, the number or percentage of population or something like that?
Well, that would... No, there isn't.
Manufactured homes?
No, I was thinking of VRBOs.
Oh, VRBOs.
Not manufactured, obviously not.
Not as part of this proposal, but I suppose if, you know, Wallowala went down that road, they gave the current operators, you know, 30 or 60 days to come in and reapply for their licenses, and then that's it, the ones that came in, that was the cap. They don't allow the single-family homes to be VRBOs. They do allow owner-operate, so if you owner-occupy units to be created, so if you have detached accessory dwelling, you could rent that out, or you could live in that and rent a primary home. So we'll kind of monitor. That's kind of the sense that we've had all along, is that we've had a couple of complaints, but the community, for the most part, hasn't been outraged like over Wallowala, so...
Plus, Wallowala has an abundance of hotels where College Place is not ready to put guests right now, and so until we have place to put guests, it's probably not something we should aggressively pursue, something to think about.
Thank you.
All right.
That was a long process, good job.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our fiscal year 2020 department head, and there it is. We are going to kind of skip a little bit and start with Mr. Ricard, since he's on a roll.
And I just want to introduce this a little bit there, this whole process.
Please.
Before we really delve into operating and capital, typically, the workshop in October is a chance for department heads to provide overview for their needs and lines for various departments. And you'll see, we've started a little with the operating budget and then bringing capital, but we really figure out where we're coming needs are being... So this is a chance for everyone to essentially present their needs, and then that way, as we're doing, the council is aware of where the gaps are at, or where the needs are at, so...
So questions can be asked at this time, just to make sure... Okay, just want to make sure that we're doing all that, okay?
Okay.
Because I like to ask questions.
So I manage basically like three departments, and one, I guess, community development would be, so I handle facilities, which would be anything from, you know, smaller rebuilding to just little remodel projects to, hey, we need some light bulbs. So, and then building inspection, so under facilities, I should step back, Larry Bowman is the facility manager for me, and he coordinates the projects, and he also does, he's the building official, and he provides backup to the inspector for inspections and also plan reviews. He is currently out on sick leave, just in case you didn't know that. And then building inspection is primarily Scott Hall does all of our building inspections and most of the plan reviews, except when he's away. We have contracted out with Northwest Code Professionals to help provide us with some backup for inspections when vacations are needed. Both Larry and Scott tend to max out that 240 hours of accumulated vacation time that you can accrue, and so we've utilized a third party for some of that. And then the planning side is me. I should also mention that we have Carolyn Hall, she's our permit tech and provides assistance to both public works and engineering and building and administrative assistant type needs, but I manage her as well. And then we do a lot of our long-range planning and zoning through consultants, so Greg Dorn has primarily been the planner that we've been using the last couple of years, and he's been doing a good job for us. I won't get into this right now, but I... So we have four FTEs, and I have a requesting for an additional FTE for building inspection. So we'll just jump down to, for consultants this year, I do have an increase, and I think I can probably bring that back down to where we were at this year in terms of consultant fees. I was projecting a little bit more for the appeal that we're going through, and turns out, we probably won't spend nearly as much as I have in the budget so far. But some things that we have coming out next year is we will have to... Annually, we review our comprehensive plan, and we need to address the fact that our current comprehensive plan does not acknowledge that we still have martine airfield in our urban growth area, so we need to take a look at the land use on that and determine what that's going to be. Work with the property owner, there's a new property owner, Mike Corliss purchased that recently. We also need to sit down and do some work with the county on taking a good, hard look at the exclusive agricultural zones that are surrounding both the City of Wallowala and College Place, and those are very protected edlands, and in long range, they'll have... They will influence how we develop if we're not able to convert those over, so... And then likely after we adopt the development code, we're going to probably find some areas that need some tweaking that we either missed, or, you know, so there'll be some tweaks next year for that, I'm sure. And then the big one is getting the county to work with the cities of Wallowala and College Place on updating the countywide planning policies. Those have not been updated since 1993, and those policies are what guide how we determine where growth goes in the county, so there's going to be a lot of work done on those. So that's... I was planning on doing GPR at the Port Farm, but it sounds like that grant actually is not... GPR is not eligible, so we won't be doing that this year, but... Under training, it's a... Primarily, it's going to be for our building division. We're going into a new code cycle this year. The state will update it, new energy codes, and we'll have a new building code, so we've already done some training on that. We sent Scott and Larry, one went to the code update for the commercial side, and the other went to the residential side, and now we'll swap those, and I'll do the opposite this year. Carolyn Hall, we sent her some training just recently for permit technician work, and so we'll continue to do that, especially since she's new to that, this industry. And I'll attend a couple of conferences, but it's not any different than last year. No difference in equipment. So personnel, I kind of went into a little bit of... It's the building inspection that's struggling. We have the one inspector, and Larry has not been able to provide his, the needed backup inspections, nor the plan reviews. It's accumulation of his workload on facility stuff and just where he's at physically, so... Last year, Scott performed just under 2,400 inspections, and these are just Scott's inspections. He tracks them, Larry, when he fills in, doesn't track his, but that averaged to about 10 inspections a day, but frequently, there would be as many as 25 inspections a day, depending on the week. That's dropped a little bit in terms of the number of inspections per day. This year, it's more like just over eight per day on average to date, but still, we still have the highs where he's just, I mean, going nonstop in circles. And they're not easy inspections, a lot of it's dealing with one of our larger builders, and it's a struggle almost every inspection, every step of the way. I've managed to keep his overtime down because I send him home early at the end of the week, usually four to five hours early on average. And, I mean, on the one hand, he's grateful to go home, but on the other hand, the work's still, you know, the inspections got done, but the plan reviews are still backing up, so it's hard. And as I alluded to earlier, he maxes out on his vacation all the time at that 240. He, you know, he hasn't had, he hasn't taken a week off since last Christmas. I mean, that's the kind of, the time of year when he will take off a week, or a week and a half, maybe two weeks, is when it's super slow, and... But even then, he's not chewing up a bunch of hours because there's holiday schedule and that, so... So I'd ask you to consider trying to figure out a way to fill another building inspection position. My thoughts would be that Scott's role as the primary inspector now would move into more of a plan reviewer and then act as a backup inspector and provide guidance to the new inspector. And the new inspector would primarily be out in the field, and then when Scott's away, when needed, would do plan reviews. And depending on how Larry does, he may factor into doing some of the plan reviews as well, helping out with that. What else did I want to say about that? There is another option, is that we could do a third-party review for the plan reviews, and we've done that in the past. We've used SafeBuild, we currently have a contract with SafeBuild to do plan reviews, and we've used them a little bit. But to give you an idea of, so we, the way we structure our permits, you have, we charge for a plan review fee, and that's 65% of what the building permit is, so there's a plan review fee, that's paid, and then when they come get the permit, they pay for the permit itself. So under, this year alone, we've collected just over $91,000 in plan review fees, so that's revenue that Scott's, you know, for the work he's done. So we... That, I'm sure, is split up amongst, you know, my salary, and Larry's, and Carolyn's, and Scott's. But if we were to send that out to SafeBuild or even Northwest Code Professionals, they would take 75% of that, so they'd take $68,000 worth of revenue. So we're not doing ourselves any favors by sending that out, because we still have to figure out how we're going to fill that gap to pay the salaries for the existing people we have, so it can help out if we're using it a little bit, but even then, it's, you know, it's still, the stress, we're not really improving the situation that our inspectors are in. Projected goals, bright side stuff? Well, we've, we're working, we filed the appeal to the county, so hopefully, we have a good outcome on that, and we're able to get area to ready into the city for future commercial growth. We'll continue to work on the Lions Park renovation. After the development code's updated, we'll continue to tweak the code. I didn't talk about facilities or stuff. One of the big facility things that we have in the budget this year is to, we added in this year's budget, was to build a evidence processing building for the police department, and we're working on the design of that. I didn't budget enough for that project. It's going to be quite expensive, and it's not an elevator building, it's basically a heated garage, and it's probably going to run us around $140 a square foot, so we're looking at $110,000 versus the 50 or 60 I think I budgeted for last year, so... With that said, you know, we have started the Remo project over here, the jail cells and the existing garage. We'll put that off, we'll still finish the design on it, but we'll put that project off probably till 2021 so that we can get the police department in a better situation. So that's the big project for facilities. But we'll continue to, I think I have some money, and to finish out the parking lot and to finish, we have a design for landscaping, if some of you remember, for around City Hall, we'd like to get that finished up. I'd like to get the front doors on City Hall, ADA, you know, actuated so that four marge can get into the building without somebody holding the door open for all of that's very nice, unless they do four, but it's, I mean, we have a lot of people that come here to pay their utility bills, and most of them are, that do that, are elderly and need some assistance getting into the building, but I think I've taken up enough time. Unless there's questions.
So for adding a building inspector, do you, this is really loud tonight, do you expect it to stay at this volume for a while? I mean, I know it's hard to project.
That is very hard to project, and it's a concern. It depends on what happens with the McCarrion Christianson property, how far along. We're getting low on residential lots. Next year, Hayden Homes will finish out, and I'm estimating that they'll have about 28 homes that they'll build next year, and that will finish out the homestead development. You know, we've got some onesie-twosies here and there, some Scrivlers, Brandon Stepper's got some homes up off of Maple, but I think almost all of those are spoken for. We are still expecting the Village of Fort Wallowala apartment complex, that's 180 units, but they're, you know, they're going to... And that's the other thing, too, is that if that goes next year, next winter or spring, Scott's going to be basically, because they're going to be building seven buildings at once, he's going to be basically there all day long. So, and then, you know, who knows what other kind of little commercial products we might have that come along the way, you know, we're talking about a hotel and a fast food restaurant and... So I figure, you know, I'm hoping next year we'll have 270 some odd units that we'll bring along, those will be apartments and houses, and that's lower than the, I think we're about 319 this year is what I'm expecting, so that, that's lower, but, you know...
And so then the revenue from the inspections, or I guess the building permits, is just $91,000, or how else would that... And if that spread over the floor of, you currently, like, how would that be...
I mean, there's the permit revenue, there's, I mean, I don't know the whole financial side of it, I mean, you know what we collect on for permits, but it doesn't cover everything. I mean, you'd be pulling out of the...
Just current expenses?
And that would be an ongoing expense, that's an issue if you have sustained golden permits, it makes sense to like scale up, or if it's trying to figure out the uncertainty of like in price, then go ahead, essentially how damage lay out, so I'm trying to get some numbers out of them to figure out if you're getting that one, but that's going to be a big drive for...
Yeah, yeah, because obviously, I mean, it sounds like a huge need, and would be, but I don't want to get the puppies down the road.
So, and like I said, you know, we have Northwest Code Professionals, they've provided inspection services to us, I think, this summer, three or four times, and the experience that we've been having is... And the experience that we've been having is that Scott, in preparation for being gone, lets his contractors know that, hey, I'm going to be gone these days. And so there is a huge ramp up before he leaves of inspections. Nobody calls in. We get three or four inspections for the third-party guy. And then there's a week of just massive numbers of inspections. And then he doesn't have any time to do plan reviews. And those are piling up.
Why is that?
That's a maintenance issue.
I don't know. I mean, they're accustomed to their inspector and then.
More familiar?
More, yeah.
That's not necessarily a good.
I mean, trust me, Scott's very thorough. I wouldn't want to be inspected by him.
No, no, I just, it's a strange phenomenon.
I mean, some of that could be how we're handling it. I mean, I don't know that it's necessary for us to let the contractors know that somebody's going on vacation because, but, you know, for some of these projects, I mean, like the Hophie, for instance, you know, that's a commercial project and a guy that's coming out of the Tri-Cities that doesn't have any experience with that project and hasn't looked the plans over, it's complicated, you know, you want to let those guys know because if they can, they will try to schedule around the inspections, but.
Steve, we'll see you later.
Mr. Cleveland?
I believe it was last year we added an employee to kind of help with our public relations with a lot of our contractors and developers and people seeking permits and I guess my question is kind of how are we doing in terms of, I'm seeing some confused faces. Did we add something that wasn't going to be there?
Addment.
Yeah, but that was, that was two years ago.
Oh, two years, okay. I'm fly. Just how are we doing in terms of kind of maintaining relationships? Because this sounds like it's in the same vein as we want to provide, you know, good service to those that want to convert community and build. And not having an inspector, having a backlog can be quite a, you know, just a pain to work around. So I'm just kind of curious, how are we doing if we're going to like providing good service to those that are needy and useless?
We've made improvements on the submittal process. So we have a plan and build email address that you can send plans in. Carolyn, she's really good at communicating with the customers about when, you know, additional information's needed and coordinating all that. And now, you know, we have somebody at the front window to issue permits and a face to our department. We're, there are some permits that are not being issued as quickly. We're still much more efficient than the county for sure, especially on the residential side and wall-to-wall. We're still gating them out. We shoot, we shoot for two, we turn around time on a single-family home, especially if it's a complete package and designed by a professional and we should be able to get that out. And that's where the stress is coming in and, you know, having a heavy day of, you know, inspection after inspection and inspection. But if you're still getting out at the end of the day and going home relatively on time, it's just a rough day. But when you know you weren't able to do that plan review that's sitting on your desk and it's been there for, you know, 16 days and.
That's ruining your nights.
Yeah, it does. It does. So we're maintaining, but it's at the expense of the wellness of mine, basically.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Card?
It's a minor thing, but I know when employees don't use their vacation time, an individual that uses their vacation time is always going to have to eat. If somebody consistently does not use their vacation time, we do cash out on our policy. Just cash out or it's just going for, they're really, you're talking about, they're actually 1.1, 1.10, depending on the crew, they're more than 1.1. So you start looking at this now, a couple of people, you're already at the quarter of an FDE, of the fact that they can't use their vacation time. So you're actually paying for 1.1 person, meaning they have one body. It is entering in overtime and these other considerations, I'm sure. So it is something, yeah. The use, not, yeah, not using PDOs is, you got a little financial negative impact to it, of course, we all stand, have to do, yeah.
Good point.
Well, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing your job.
Thank you for doing your job with a smile.
Nice observation.
Okay. Then we will be moving on.
I told my family that I would be leaving at 6:30, so I will stay for as long as I can.
20 minutes.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll go backwards. We're going to go over to HR. Mr. Dory?
All right. Human Resource Department consists of myself and then I get a little bit of de cherie's time to help me out, about 12%. And we take care of all the human resources and payroll. The last year, we hired almost 11 people. We have a water utility position open that, once we hire that position, will be 11 full-time employees that we've hired this year, which is a lot for us. And I'm happy to report that our finance director that we made an offer to is on board. So he turned his notice in and called me today and said, good to go. So, so that's done.
When does he start?
Um, we're kind of planning it by ear because he wanted to get 30 days' notice, but he also would like to come in here and there and try to put between now and then, take some long three-day weekends, come down and work on Monday or Friday. Because he has some leave to burn there. Anyway, so I'll just hit the high points. Every year I go to the Labor Relations Institute, the BIAS rally, the civil service conference. I'd like to continue to do that. I would like to request that and it would be an increase in my budget. I'm currently going to school to get my human resource management degree. So would like to continue to have my tuition paid. I requested a small increase in the wellness budget. Last year this time, we had 39 full-time employees and now we're up to 45. So more employees means when we have employee luncheons or whatever, different activities we do, it costs a little bit more money. The next thing is human resource information technology. Right now, everybody fills out a paper time card.
So that shocks me.
With a spreadsheet. It takes a lot of my time on payroll to go through everybody's time card, correct errors, hunt people down, get signatures. I mean, it's a chore. And I think that it's time for us to move to the 20 out of 20 first district.
18?
Yeah, I don't know. And offer some sort of an automated clock-in, clock-out program that we can use. So I've included that in my budget. There would be increase in our BIAS software to accommodate for that and then the cost of the software to track the time in attendance. And there's more than time in attendance included in the software. There's, you know, time off requests, lots of different things. So I've put a request in for that. And then the other sizable increase is the request for another software program called the YOGO. They offer lots of different human resource management modules. I just requested the, a couple of them because they're expensive. One is to help with the recruitment and it gets our jobs. What the hell's going on there?
They're ducking secrets.
I know.
It's third grade.
Secrets don't make friends.
Check yes, check the yes button.
As you were. NeoGOD offers a suite of modules that caters to government entities, starting with the recruitment process. It gets us on governmentjobs.com and then helps with our onboarding.
Cool.
What?
I just got $10.
Good job. Good job. So that helped?
Yeah.
It did. That helps with our wellness program. And then one thing that I wanted to bring up is that there's, Sarah and I opted for a sizable increase in our budget line for one left one employee. We are responsible for our, for all of his medical costs. And so without saying too much, we're afraid that those might increase in the next few years. So, and there's no way to guess what that might be. A small, a small increase in my operating supply line just because I need to order another box of the proxy cards and it's just a $500 chunk of change every time. Goals for next year would be an update to the personnel manual. We're kind of holding until we're on board with the new insurance company because they will review it for us at no cost. So we want to take advantage of that. And then another goal would be the destruction, the proper destruction of employee files that have been stacking up for a very long time.
We have, anybody has a question?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, my question, and I think I asked Mike, and I'm sorry I didn't follow up. Where are the costs that you're requesting? Like, I don't, like, where?
Well, as far as any information technology, it's a certain information technology plan and the operating revenue expense stuff, just for the operating side, you'll see various lines. They have notes and the notes, they have items called out and then.
Okay, so just on the 94-page thing that we can't search? Got it. That may or may not have come up several times. So where, okay, so I'll just scroll through then. Like, that's just not easy.
Can you do it from two lines?
Are you looking at this document?
No, what is that? I don't think.
It's what we fill out and then it's put into probably the document that you're looking at.
Yeah, I learned the listen to, the operating revenue expense with notes, they had everything all put together. So this is the document that she's looking at.
So I would be around the 518s. So that's helpful.
Do you know approximately what page number that is? It's between 1 and 93?
I'll find it.
It's right there. Page 46 and 47.
No, that's technology. It's fun.
But she said 518 is budget.
You might have some.
There's other 518s that are fun.
No, she can't sort it.
Do we have anything stronger than water? So how are we doing on that Adobe Pro?
The Adobe Pro will be given.
Great. Well, this one.
Is that something Jeremy's working on?
So while they're looking at that though, like, can't you, can you not like print to PDF from whatever program this is from?
Yeah, it's their BIAS program. It does have some issues with that.
That'd be great, see if that's fixed. Okay.
So you're looking at page 20.
Okay.
20 and 21.
So, you know, I think, Heather, I can't remember the stage of this, but last year, I think I requested, I don't think it was a final budget, but we actually asked for variance call. So in other words, maybe that's what you're at, is to address so that what's in the budget, what's being asked for and what's the variance call for request?
Because we also just sent, the original is the 2019 budget, so we don't even have the actuals or with a annualized number through the rest of the year. So that makes it a little tricky, but I guess I was thinking more of having that stuff for, if she just has a request of an increase for wellness, well, what was it last year? What is it this year? It seems like super easy to just plop that in for next year. But, or we could cancel the meeting, everyone could fix, no, that's okay. That would make it really easy, but this is, I can look at this too. I can read.
Is there something specifically that you want me to speak to as far as dollar-wise?
No, I'm just reading. No, it's fine, okay. Any other questions? I'm done.
No others?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't have any people, right?
No, I have no people.
But you have .12 of de cherie, so I can't say that you are the human resource department?
All right. Lisa, you want to go with administration?
Thank you, Carol.
Very much.
Clearly. So you guys, you guys know a lot more about what I do. Council, commission meetings, records management, and that includes both the maintaining the city's records, working with each department to do that, as well as public records requests, the legislation that you guys take care of, and contracts and agreements. So as you guys know, we've done Word docs for the meetings. I think that's working really well. I think it's working well with the public and the other commissions as well. Records management is one of those things that gets put on the back burner a lot because of staffing and time. Because it's, as Sean said, one of her goals is records destruction of years and years and years of old personnel records. But we have to follow the regulations, which means you have to, it's a lot of time-consuming work to determine what each thing is, where it falls into category, what's the allowable destruction and all of that. And that takes both of our times. So it's just something that gets set aside. Legislation, ordinances, as you guys know, since 2016, we've done a lot of changes with our municipal code. Right now, the pages of code that have been affected with our changes, we've hit 310 pages that have been changed in our municipal code. That is before the Unified Development Code gets finished at the end of this year. I expect us to end at around 600 pages affected. And just so you know, as far as budget-wise, that is $20 per page. So when you're thinking about budget, when you're thinking about these changes and all of that, that needs to be a consideration because it's not necessarily the page of the code, like, so we can have a 20-page ordinance that affects 65 pages of the code. And for each page of the code that's affected, that has to be changed and maintained, it's $20. So.
What's the basis for the $20?
For them going in, verifying everything, editing everything.
Who said they?
Municipal code corporation. They maintain our official municipal code.
Okay. It's a hard cost.
Yeah. Yeah. So they keep everything updated, codified, they fit everything in, make sure that all the references are attached and everything, all the legal stuff that is right here, so.
Yeah, smaller font.
White margin.
White margins.
When are we going to change the margins?
Let me comment about the Word docs. It's, you know, it's this repository and I've asked the question that once things go in and they don't go back out, in other words, and that's still true. In other words.
Yes.
And I'm not saying anyone is doing that, but no one goes back any year later and says, you know, let's just get rid of this document to save this space.
No, and especially not your guys' stuff. Because if we were to ever get rid of it, we couldn't get rid of it. It goes to the state archives anyway. And the paper copies, I actually do. It goes to the State Archives anyway, and the paper copies, I actually do. When they reach the retention that we have to maintain them, they get sent to the State Archives, but they're all permanent record, no destruction ever.
So 10 years out, if we could go back to Word docs today and find the same intact document?
Exactly.
The only thing I would say, and this is just kind of like an observation. When it was up to us whether to make photocopies and put it in a binder, we were very, you know, we kind of limited, I think, what we put in there. My impression is sometimes that there's a lot of data dumped into Word docs, and what I'm saying is, it is physically impossible for us to review all of what's been put in there. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just saying it is interesting that, I would just be cautious sometimes, you know, it's, there's 15 attachments, you know? But no, but what's neat about it is, if a question did come up, or if later on you want to go back and search it, it's all there.
It's all there.
That is super cool. I'm just saying it seems to be this, a lot of data that is dumped in there, and I'm just, sometimes I feel a little overwhelmed.
Yeah. It's a little different from when we started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An observation.
And that very reason is why we moved to the electronic agenda format in the first place, is it was, it was not maintainable to provide you guys with the information that was being supplied for you in a paper format. It just, it was impossible.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's duly noted. So anyway, that's just something for everybody, department heads and everybody, to keep in mind when we're, when we're doing these major revisions on the code, to think about adding that piece in, because it's in my budget, but I don't control it, so. Contracts and agreements, we have lots of those, that's the portion of de chérie that she's helped me with that. And we hope to do some further work with that, of course, with situations with Sarah and everything, a lot of the goals that we have for doing some upgrades to our processes there will be kicked down the road until after our new Finance Director is in place and up to speed. We did a lot of changes with events this last year. Added some really good things to the July Freedom Festival. We're going to do some more things at Winterfest, we added some things at Farm Market to make, just to make it more of a draw for people to come and hang out, we did that, the music all the time and everything like that. We're kind of at that stage with the Farm Market where we need to make a decision as to where we're going with it, because if we want to go full-on with it, it's going to be administratively complex because of the fact that we would need to then get into all of the service programs that are offered with Farm Markets, like the Fresh Bucks, and there's different federal and state aid programs that provide supplement money and things of that nature, but there's just no administrative time to manage something like that at this point. But, that's where I think, I think the Farm Market needs to go that direction in order to really, truly be successful in the future. It may be down the road a little ways. I am currently on the Board of, the Executive Board of the Washington Municipal Clerks Association, which requires some extra travel and things, so my travel budget is a little bit higher. It's the same this year as it was last year, but this is my second year in that position, and so continuing that, in that position obligates me to those things. And then, I added training for my deputy, because in order for her to be able to step in and help me, then she needs to continue with her training. We get a lot of that taken care of through scholarships, but I need to make sure that she gets that training regardless of whether we get a scholarship or not. So, I hope that sometime in the future, we'll consider having a full deputy instead of a third deputy, just because then we can more work on those records things and some goals that we'd like to head for in the future. But, other than that, I don't have a whole lot of ask for anything new for next year, just kind of maintaining.
Okay, any questions? Lisa? None, all right then. Thank you.
Bye. It's not six tonight.
Good night. All right, then, moving on, we're going to go back the right way, so Mr. Boos?
Thank you. Well, again, this year, Fire Patrol has had really a good year. We really appreciate the support and direction we receive from both Council and City Management. It's allowed us to progress some of our projects. So, our accomplishments include establishing the ambulance service for our community. That has kept us hopping, we're set to break our 1,500 runs this year, see where that goes. We did purchase a vehicle, replaced the chief's vehicle, so that we could tow our safety trailer and our man trailer. We're currently participating in a legalization study for fire EMS for the Valley. That is progressing, I was just, you know, meeting did before yesterday regarding that, so we should hopefully see some information by the end of the year. So, information is slow to come, but we're dealing with three different agencies and so forth, I'm sure we'll relax and get ready for some. We've done a lot to increase our presence in the community in various ways, different organizations, different events and so forth, some of our public education, we have hired another additional firefighter EMT to help us reestablish our 24/7 paid firefighter coverage that was discontinued back in 2005. That's allowed us to have some of the 24/7, which is a big group, instead of having 18 and 19-year-olds managing an emergency response. Not too much older, but some of them are actually quite a bit older, but more experienced staff members and someone that's a lot easier to hold, it's a good addition. We did hire three summer temporary employees to help with load stacking, we usually find them in the summer time. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of wildfires, but fortunately, we look at this year to help offset those costs, but they were very helpful. We accomplished a lot through summer, things that we haven't been able to do for a long time, basically components of equipment and stations, so it was really welcome to have them and for response during the daytime, too. Appreciate that. Our new staffing program continues to keep our residency full, appreciate that. Although, our numbers roll on EMTs, which is our primary use, so that's probably the biggest reason why I'm here tonight, instead of Chief Witter, he was helping with the EMT class, so. We have continued to provide standby EMS coverage for College Business High School and Cigar Road School for the students, so on those Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Friday nights, we have volunteers that are better to help them as well, which also helps in our identity within the community.
Absolutely.
So it's a good thing. Goals for 2020, we want to continue to control our costs, everything seems to be going up, although, we're working on ways to make sure that we keep that to an end. We're going to strive to continue to operate the ambulance service in black and keep it stacked. We're looking to replace and remodel some of our existing showers, bathroom fixtures and so forth in the station, but as now we've hit the 20-year mark, we really need some updating. We're looking to purchase a replacement vehicle for one of our water line apparatus, it is an 1985 Chevy, it has served us well, but probably will be past time to find a replacement. It costs us a fair amount for the EMTs to keep, sometimes places a tight spot.
I thought we just did that.
That was the other one.
Oh, okay.
We replaced one, now it's time for the other, now there's another one. Catch them. Looking to replace or update the command trailer that is used out on fire mobilization, and actually does a very good job of subsidizing its own expenses, in fact, we should operate long and black with that, to benefit for us here locally if we have weekends, but we can possibly regionally. We need to look at replacing our water tender, something we've been looking for for a few years, and it is aging, and we have response areas here within our own community where a water tender is necessary. I don't see that going away with our growth.
Forgive my ignorance, but there's a water tender. I'm guessing it's not someone who's like, you know, what can I do for you?
They bring the water in. It is a truck with a marsh tank dedicated for supply for either structure fires or water fires. An example of structure that we needed on the ER surgery area, it's not served by accident. We want to continue to increase our community presence. It's a good thing when we see the public and greet us, or greeted by first name a lot of times, and people have a smile on their face when we walk through the door, they know that we're there to help them. We appreciate that support. We want to look for ways to drop response methods for fire EMS calls, so that we can increase service to our own community and our immediate peers. Many, many times every week, other departments and agencies cross through our city to provide service. For District 4, many times, people on the west side of our city and beyond are waiting for help to come from Howard Street, or maybe from the city of Wallawalla, from Eastgate. If we can raise some of the boundary lines and say, send the closest ambulance first for critical emergencies, that is definitely a nice thing for us. We want to continue to research non-traditional funding sources. Ways to keep our service up with as little increase as possible in budget reports. Utilize technology better to help us reduce our expenses, et cetera. We could definitely do better there, and some of the new resources that others are looking at, are things that we can push for us as well. Many times, we still have to take records on paper and then transfer it. Sometimes we have more than one program, and we have to enter information and looking for something maybe consulting to get that revision first. Looking to establish GEMT reimbursement for Medicaid transports, which could benefit us $30,000, $40,000 a year for that. As most of you probably realize, Medicaid reinforces at a fairly sustainable rate for rural emergency care, and the federal government and the states are looking at ways to make sure that resource is available and something like a technology. Guess we're looking at promoting some guy named John Boos.
I don't have that in mind.
I'm not sure about what that's.
Is it like naming a park after him or something?
I don't know. Maybe just.
Go, John, go, John.
Put some banners on the street or something.
And drive around saying, this is John Boos.
He's John Boos.
Little parking place. Have you seen this guy?
No.
We can do, install a water stop near the fire station. It would save us a lot on costs for fixtures, for valves and so forth on that apparatus, and just maintaining and cleaning equipment. Hard water presents a lot of challenges for us, and we spend a lot of time with our temporary hires and some just working on issues that wouldn't be there if we had water stops, even that. Hoping to hire additional personnel to support the delivery of emergency services, with the challenge of taking on the ambulance service, first draft, most days, and being able to put out a second ambulance 100% of the time is not always a reality for us. We need to look at increasing that. The need is there, and looking for ways to have that be self-supporting, with calls that we hand off transports and so forth, and some of the non-traditional funding sources. Looking to increase stipends for some out-of-town transport on-call positions, similar to what we do with our new resident program at another position, it's a very minimal amount. When they actually do go out of town, they would be paid probably by District 4, it's kind of a conglomeration that three different agencies are working on. How do we send people out of town? It's something that the hospital has issues with, but all of the agencies, it's not a big money manger, but for us, this would benefit us, because that person, when they are not out on long-distance transfers, would be here to respond, to provide service directly to the city. That may be the first as well. 2021, 21-year-old, you know, something that might help us with increasing our staffing, the ambulance utility fees. The city of Wallawalla is looking at that, I think they tabled it because of the consolidation, research, and whatnot, but that's something a lot of, a lot of areas are going to maintain their service. We have a lot of responses in this city to agencies, organizations, properties that don't really contribute to our taxes to provide that service. All of our care facilities, which make up two-thirds of our medical calls, really are getting way free. Responses to some of our non-tax entities, which take another percentage, for some ways to have everything shared a little bit. And then, with the capital facilities plan, you know, just to replace equipment, as we have planned over the four years, make sure we keep maintaining that, replacing it as needed, so that it doesn't fail us. Any questions?
Mr. Peterson?
Essentially, the new position was funded off of the fees reflected for building, more or less, for the ambulance ones. I have a really, if you had a finance director, I'd love to see some reports on what the cash receivable balances on that, and what our reimbursement is, and what the cash, how we provide cash flow on a month-based basis on that. Because I think at the time, potentially, that was something where you could actually pay for us and never position, if you wanted to, it was not an initial burden for the department.
Well, I can, we didn't have a position, as far as money was coming, it does cover a half of an additional position, and there was the issue coming up with the other half matched the half we have, but they had GEMT revenue.
What is that sample?
Ground emergency medical transport, it's a weird scheme through State Department Health.
That's a smoking mirrors.
Well, yeah, it's like a, it's like a black box of money. Well, yeah, it's like a, it's like a black box of money magic when it blows out. It's a double question.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Apparently. But we figured out it's been above $40,000 and they'll cover the other half. So, and we couldn't apply to it until now because it's a year after you start BLS.
Is that guaranteed reimbursement?
With that study that was turned in, yeah.
Okay, cool. And ongoing?
Yeah.
Yeah, to establish.
And it's one of those things where as you got more staff and go on more calls, your, the reimbursement through GEMT actually increases, so it just scales up.
Yeah, yeah, totally. They are going forward to see where we're at. It takes a while to close. Yeah, it's not magical for I haven't shared, but looking for these funding sources so that we can provide adequate coverage. Sure, yeah. Sustainable, yeah.
So I have a question, but it might end up being more for Mike. Why are the replacing the existing showers not part of facilities and it's part of the fire bill, fire budget?
Well, it ends up being a transfer into facilities.
Oh, okay. I mean, why isn't it part of John's?
Yeah, well.
It is, it ends up being part of his?
Yeah, it is a part. If you look later on in the capital facility plan, that is a facility.
Okay, got it.
Work that's been done, which is.
He's got it right here.
Okay, got it, okay.
Got it, thank you.
What are the non-traditional funding sources? I mean, I saw GEMT, but not. That's an example. There's a lot of different grants available for various things out there. Just this idea of having a stipend position similar to what we do with our leave resident program. We put another body there that, you know, it's a moderate reimbursement and then we also get paid if they actually go out of town on transfers. So it's a benefit to them, but it's a big benefit to us to have another person. Allows us to have a second ambulance out the door. We can't say warranty, but volunteers, but. Gotcha. Or any of those.
So is your ask then for one additional full-time or what's the, did I?
Yeah, initially, I think with the, the share, the half that's already there and the half from GEMT would be one at this point. It would be very beneficial for us if we could get our training officer back in the office so we can actually do his job instead of just responding on calls.
Oh, wasn't that the point of doing that?
Initially, yeah, that was it. To give a 24-hour service. Yeah, we had to make that change temporarily. Patrick has done a phenomenal job on bringing our training back up in roll. When it was something that was kind of shared between David and I, we have a lot of other responsibilities too. So, yeah, we're getting all the necessary things, but to have a whiz-bang training program that excites everybody and gets us to really be, we really need to have that person around us.
And Patrick is that person, but it's just on call.
Mr. Peterson?
We started the ambulance service and it was kind of a, yeah, you know, we're not sure how this thing's gonna go, right? I mean, we had some plans and get that. Could you give it a letter grade for the first, what would you say? How's it going?
Other agencies have given us thumbs up, pats on the back. Yeah, there's been calls that didn't go so well or things that we needed to change. Overall, you know, I think we're in a good solid beat at this point until we can, can put additional paid staff on that. Our biggest challenge is, is staff and there are times when initially we'll roll out our second ambulance with one person aboard and that's the only feeling. I did it just the other day, so I know where they suffer. Sometimes we haven't been able to send that second one out. We've had to have an agency fill in for us. We made a commitment to them and meant to us that we're gonna handle first two calls out. So they're not going to miss for that service. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, Chief Tamara's?
Okay. Well, thank you for your attentiveness. I know this can be a bit daunting, listening to all this stuff here, so we'll get right to it. Ways for some benefits. We begin collective bargaining for our officers and at the end of the month, so we know that that will be increasing this next year, so we don't work with numbers already. Personal staffing though, we are up full staffs, first time since I've been here.
Wait, what?
We're up to full staff.
I just wanted to hear you say it again.
First time since I've been here.
That's awesome.
Which is fantastic, thanks to Sean's work and we've got some great employees and we're very grateful for them. They, Andrew and Eric and Brandon will be graduating in April, next April. So for the time that we say we're gonna hire somebody, the time that they graduate is here. So it's a long process. So Andrew's getting ready to be office, since he's at TOC here at the end of the month. This will be my third year making this request for an assistant command staff personnel as within growing department. We're in a lieutenant cap position. I can tell you that all the variables our size all have this position. I'm not even like, not. So it's, it is a concern for me and it's, you know, it allows me to have some operational leadership and it allows me to have some oversight in the department as we're seeking accreditation. It's a big piece of that. We're also requesting a part-time clerk. Again, with the growing department, little requirements, the clerks have become overextended. My concern is, is that there's a lot of stress going on a lot of times trying to accomplish things that are needed to be done and I don't want to bring these days out. Also with, again, with some mandated mandates that have been hitting us with I-1639, we need help with additional checks on pistol weapons permits and those types of things. So part-time clerk would be a great start towards reducing that stress and helping us increase our professionalism and what it provides to our community. Going into some specific budget increases needs, two factor authentication is what we got last year for our officers. I purposely did not buy three additional licenses, knowing that we would be getting those positions, Andrew and Eric, the new officers, will get those this next year or so we need one for myself and the two officers. So we're requesting additional free licenses for 2021. And what that does is allows us with our mobile data terminals to be seduce compliant. We're looking at doing a weapon. We want to reduce, we want to replace our 40-calibers with a 9mm. Current trends on law enforcement have shown that recent testing has 9mm is actually outperforming the 40-caliber weapon and with less recoil, better higher hit percentage from actual shootings. Ironically, kind of security actually, in when there is a lethal shooting, officers miss between 70 and 80% of the time. So when we reduce that, when we drop that to a 9mm, that increases greatly. So we're trying to improve our safety and have a better hit percentage. So the projectile, 9mm projectiles outperforming the 40 and the 45. It's significantly cheaper, it's over $200 less a case for ammo, so it's a lot less Anyways, there's a lot of information I need to, but it is a significant purchase for us. We are due to replace our guns anyways and we'd just like to make that go down to the 9mm to, at this time. We're also requesting a less lethal tool, the 40mm. There's a picture of it here, I don't know if it's on your, it's right there. These are very expensive, so what we'd like to do is purchase one for each one of the sergeants and then two of the officers. Joey Langley is already certified, qualified, I don't know if this is on the SWAT team. And then Tanner Harris will be the instructor, so they'll get certified on a lot of four people. It's $21 a round, it's very expensive. Having had personal experience with these, when I was on the state patrol SWAT team, they were very effective. They are much more effective actually than our less lethal shotguns. Less lethal shotgun is pain compliant, the 40mm actually knocks them down. It's a great tool. The city of Wallawall has purchased one for every single officer. So it's kind of a progression for them. I should say in the officer, it's for every component of vehicles.
And they don't have take-home cars.
They do not. We're requesting some money for steel carport cover for the range, just to help us protect us from weather, heat and rain, snow. A place to stand up there right now is just really kind of standing up. So we'd like that to have a little added comfort out there. We're also requesting some replacement of some office chairs. We, it was great that we got rid of our green check office this year and we're very grateful for that. And we still have the green chairs that we would like to replace to increase the professionalism or workspace.
It's big, it's breaking.
And these chairs are bottom of the middle, just like flat chairs that we can get, so we're not asking for anything. We're also making a request to have a narcotics K9.
Really?
Inwent in the city. The city of College Place is not immune to control substance issues. Last year, the city of Wallawall served a warrant on a College Place home that was believed to be the largest heroin dealer in the area. Recent park video at Lion's Park is captured drug deals are apparent. So we have a heroin hand and methamphetamine problem in our community. The timing of acquiring a K9 in the city of College Place is timely because of the Wallawall Police Department's replacing theirs. We've got our former, just got promoted sergeant, he's a certified instructor who's going to train their dog and we can take advantage of that to get this program started, have this officer scale over. So, you know, send him away for a few months, which is very expensive, so we have that opportunity to have him stay in the local. So that's a great opportunity for us to give this dog at a very reasonable cost. The dog that we are purchasing will be fully insured and replaceable if something goes wrong with it. And the additional, occasionally they train, the company trains, but occasionally the trained are issues, so we, they're guarantees, we'll try to say. Anyways, there are some ongoing medical needs and we do not count this panel for the officers who have chosen and so that would be a tremendous tool for huge community to help reduce and ensure control substance issues. We're requesting contract with Car Wash, the county, the city of Wallawall and state patrol all have contracts with them and of course my officers would like to have that contract as well. We have these brand-new cars that are beautiful and right now what we do is we wash cars out in front of the door there in front of my office and that works mostly in the summertime. In the wintertime it's very hard and it's brown, crazy and it's dangerous out there to walk on and they don't like to wash the cars in the cold. So this would be, these are unlimited car washes for all our entire.
Are they gonna go there every day?
They could, yeah.
They're so proud of their.
That hard water, probably.
Seriously.
Yeah. We're asking, we did ask for a little increase in our professional service fees for Waspit accreditation. We're on schedule to get our accreditation in the spring of 2020, so we're working really hard on that and we're on track to do that.
What benefits does that bring to the community?
The accreditation will help with insurance costs. It shows professional law enforcement agency, it actually reduces the city's liability through knowing that your agency's, your officers are actually doing it right. There's 18 different accreditation goals that we have to meet. And within those 18, there's show of the wellness that we have to maintain, we have to show proof of, and show that we're not just have a policy for it, but we're actually practicing those policies. So there's only 48 agencies in the state of Washington that are accredited. So the reason is because it's a lot more. But I think it's important. I think that it shows and demonstrates professionalism of our organization of officers. It also increases their safety, knowing that we're doing things right. There's a lot of different reasons for it, but those are the big ones. Again, Power DMS, we'd like to continue doing that, that's the software that we're using for accreditation. We're hoping that Waspit becomes a sole source user of Power DMS and that will drop the fees, but we don't know what those fees are. The safe goes below $600. Right now it's $1,200 a year, but we don't. And of course, training. We have some significant training needs. Again, new recruits, Eric and Brandon starting the academy here in December. It's about $4,000 per student for them to attend the basic law enforcement academy in Marion and in the state except the rest. It's also to get the new equipment. It's roughly $2,500 per officer to just uniform and then they're basically. Additionally, we have a need for some instructors. We lost a couple officers, not lost, a couple actually retired, but we do have a need to replace some instructors. We need a less lethal shotgun. That'll include the 40mm. We need a defensive tactics instructor. Then we have some small classes here like oil, caps of resin, listen to him. We need Tanner as our firearms instructor who used to pass the pistol portion of that, but he needs to still go through the rifle portion and he also needs to attend the armorers course. You know, ask instructor, these classes will be worth in $250, $600 per class plus for being a qualms and for being a little bit business, so. We're also just notified under the new 1639 initiative, of course, another 155 mandate, but every three years, officers will have to go through 40 hours of training. It will include dealing with people with mental health, crisis training and that's, and that's great, but we're just trying to figure out how we're gonna do that. So over the next three years, I'm gonna have to spend roughly 45 people per year against the staffing of those missing needs because we generally have one, you know, some of these we have two, but we generally have one person working, so it's gonna be a significant burden to smaller organizations like ours. So we're trying to figure out what that's gonna look like. And then the care, the custody of arrestees, you know, three years ago, we were paying $85,000 a year in jail fees and now we're like around $25,000. But I'm telling you, having a consistent and competent prosecutor, that's gonna increase a little bit. We do have a contract with Semiside, which I think we're getting ready to take advantage of because we have some of them spend about nine days in jail coming up, so at least minimum. And so we may be extending our contract out there because it's, it's significantly cheaper than jail. So final summary, additional resources, training, equipment, personnel needs for growing agency, the projected figures for 2020 have been watching based on prior budget history and the priority of challenges that come here. Just basically asking for some improvements that means. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
Do we charge something for the background checks? I imagine it's not enough to compensate for a part-time person.
It's about $900 for background check?
To hire, when we're hiring? Oh, no, I'm sorry. For the service that we're providing?
Oh, no.
You don't charge anything?
They pay a fee, but the fee goes to the O L.
Hmm, okay.
So are you, are talking about?
I'm just trying to.
Concealed weapons permitting or?
Well, any, I guess anything that.
We do charge a $10 fee for fingerprint. That's part of it.
Yeah, so not enough, I'm just trying to think, like, what are the other things that
they're generating revenue for over there?
Mr. Peterson?
Would you say the addition of a K9 unit is like a retention tool also, a way to staff, Bill? How, what are your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. You know, we're constantly looking for ways to, to retain our officers and having, you know, one of the problems we have in smaller organizations is most of them become patrol officers, going to retain them. So when you have these other duties, it gives them something to get excited about. So the detective spots, the K9 spots are a significant tool for these guys and they get excited about. Yeah, it's a great point.
Mr. Cleveland?
In the past few years here, we've worked to kind of get the department kind of consolidated in one place. I was just curious how your space has been working out for you?
Yeah, so we're very cool to have all the improvements that we're going to do. We are already going to burst up seams. We actually got rid of, this last year, we got rid of the locker room to take home cover to do that, which provided us to have, this other sergeant has office space, which is fantastic, but as we continue to grow, and I think we're on the tenure plan to replace the P M E, but as we continue to grow, yeah, we're working on getting a new replacement of this city. The air pollution went out on one side of the building, I think it has to be replaced, the other side has to be replaced next. I think it has to be replaced, the other side has to be replaced next year. Um, the gate's broken, it's been broken for a year and I think we're replacing the, yeah. So, yes. We're first up the seams, but we're grateful for the space.
Hopefully we can help you out.
Yeah.
Heather? Are there grants available for some of the things like the forty millimeter um tools or, I mean, I know that?
That's the unfortunate thing, a lot of the federal uh police grants and other grants are out there. You have to have a significant brain problem or an overventryity to be able to apply. So because.
Usually by, yeah, which we're fortunate we don't have that.
What about even using something like, I forget. I feel like it was the article that they had in the Union Bulletin about Mark getting the non-AMRAF, whatever his new vehicle was. And that came out and then some civilians up and like showed up with some cash to cover it. I mean, has there been conversation over just publicizing that and just kind of saying that this is a need? Or is that not the right thing to do with this type of thing?
So those, those, what, they come through?
I'm, no, I, right, 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 right. I'm not talking, I'm talking about the citizens that like came up with the cash for the transport of it because they needed it. And obviously that's not available for, I'm just thinking like maybe there are people in this community that want to contribute in that way and don't know that those opportunities are available. And I don't know how to reach those people, but some exist. So I just.
So like Sheriff's Office has a um, where it's kind of like a memorial foundation. Uh, so they're, they, and what's the, what's the? It's a five one C. Five one C, they have a five one, we don't have that. We don't have that organization, we don't have a five one C, so we can't go out and solicit funds. They have a program that can do that. So they're unique, Sheriff's Office is unique that way. Um, we not. But maybe someone with smarter skills could help prepare a five one C.
Oh, my gosh, that's.
Nine, nine, every year.
Geez, we'll do it easy, thank you. I'm just, I know that there are people that have various passions for things like that and often look for that, but it's, it's finding those people. I mean, there, there are people that would also say, yeah, I wanna contribute money every year for deputy clerk. You know, I mean, there's just people that, there are people that do. I'm not one of them.
I have a two questions. Clarification, when you said we are needed instructor courses. So are these for existing officers to take some trainings on and, okay, so.
Again, they're instructor certifications.
So that they can do.
So right now what we're doing is we're partnering with the city wall wall and Sheriff's Office. So if we are lacking, and we, and we do this anyways in different areas, but if we're lacking instructor for like, like when Steve Harris left the agency, we didn't have a firearms instructor, so wall wall helps out. On an agreement that, hey, we're gonna help you out, but you need to find someone.
Sure.
So they do that for us, less lethal, they do that for us until we can get it replaced.
Okay. And then this is just more of a personnel question. How many of your staff speak Spanish?
One.
One, and what's their role?
Uh, Sal Diaz, he's a patrol officer.
He's a patrol officer, so we have one patrol officer.
The one coming up. Brandon does it?
Does not.
So what do we do when maybe somebody who doesn't, isn't proficient at English goes to the clerk?
So um Sal's a certified translator, so if we need to bring him in to help with that, we can do that.
Is he a contractor, so?
He um, you know, he's not a contractor. He is, uh, he's been certified to be a translator, um, so that we can use him for events. And we've used him here for city council actually once. Um, so um, if there, if there's a need for that.
So he's a, he's a translator that we know that we can hire.
He's a police officer.
He's a police officer. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I don't know all their names yet, I'm still.
There's, there's translation lines that you can call through. So we, we utilize those resources, especially when we make arrests. So if you like DUI or anything, but the B and C process, there's a, there's only a sign of the union lines.
Sure, okay. And how many officers, patrol officers do we have?
We have thirteen, we need to start.
Everyone speaks Spanish, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, chief. All right, Mr. Gordon?
I need to get up, so. Yeah, I'll make this quick. Things is gonna happen. Time's done, I have to take my nose. Put them up on the screen for you. I just wanna kind of go through and we'll hit the engineering. Actually, I have two funds here we're gonna talk about. Um, our basic support, our mission is to support the objectives of our community. And we do that really pretty much through support role, the other organizations here, administration planning, finance, public works in particular. Is this gonna, will it turn on maybe? Yeah, it'll turn on. There we go, okay. So um, what I'm gonna do here, just run through some of the things, the areas that we're involved in. You're probably pretty aware of it since we're here at council quite a bit. Project management, transportation planning, utility infrastructure planning, long-term community development planning, water rights, utility extensions. You name it, if it has something you can kick and hurt your foot with, we usually get involved with it. Uh, project financing, including the preparation of grant loan applications. You'll see that in a minute. It's very obvious that's a very large part of what we do. Um, municipal code updates and we've more and more are taking on the responsibility for the G I S system. Geographic information system. I think Mike mentioned that he's doing less of it and we're doing more of it. So that means that we're making our presence felt in that area as well. Um, we're also taking on the stormwater utility, as you know, you established a new one, um, and that's going well. I wanted to speak to this just for a moment. Uh, Mike has already presented a restructuring plan, looking forward to the future here. And we are, um, one of my requests is gonna be that we actually advance that. We were gonna do that later next year. I'd like to do it earlier next year if we can. And um effectively that will be at some point, as Paul goes on to bigger and better things, I will be assuming a role. That's what we talked about, um, over public works and the kind of combined public works, city engineer. And that involves taking and putting somebody in places that are engineering division manager, that'd be a new F T E. And in back, probably we would have our current, uh, well, our plan is that our stormwater engineering technician promoted to that position and then um back to his position. So that's effectively a new F T E. Um, we would like to do that sooner than later. We got a lot going on and I'm trying to demonstrate that here in a minute. Um, to the point where we're not sure we can keep all the bubbles in the air. Um, in terms of our future goals, we don't have anything lofty. We're just not trying to make too many mistakes this coming year, so. Anyway. Certain significant activities this year, just a little quick recap. Uh, well, number one is in the process of being relocated. It will be finished up next year. The Loop Water Base, this is the water that goes and feeds that well. I'll buy the CCF church, I'm probably aware of that, been involved with the um connection event that we went through a couple, a few weeks ago. Relocation, relocation of well number two, that's being drilled right now, that will also be finished next year. The C Street project is underway and currently impassable in some areas. So um, well, it's passable, but it's, it's chewed, chewed up and they're working on it. That we hope to be done this year. They told us it'll be done this year. Um, we'll wait and see. So we also have the College Avenue Traffic Assessment Study. I expect actually to get that reported either tomorrow or early next week. That's the study that you commissioned to go take a look at everything that's going on. Uh, city specifications, standards update, financial guarantees goes update, just a bunch of stuff that we've done this year. Okay? Sorry to bore you. But there's a lot of work. Okay. Um, this is the part that's kind of risky for me because there's a lot of lines. But I want to show you this. Every, every single project we have involves usually multiple contracts. And this is what we're tracking, okay? And it's not just engineering. We're also getting help from finance, we're getting help from administration, from public works. So it's a joint effort, a lot of this does end up in engineering. So I'm just gonna flip through some of the contracts, amendments and agreements associated with our projects. And this could get a little long, okay? This is what we're mostly, the asterisks are things that are underway, you'll see these coming up next year. But the other ones are currently in place. And we're tracking all this. These are people, these are calls, these are dead items, these are contracts. We're getting there. This is what's on our plate. So if you see my eyes glaze over sometimes in council and I can't tell you exactly what's going on about everything. It's because I'm trying to figure out which one you are talking about, okay? These are all big items.
Oh, it's still going.
And then we just got a couple more the last two days before we really update this. And I put them on that presentation, that's not on your sheet. So we are chasing, one of our goals is to chase the money. Problem is we got bloody feet right now. We're, we're wearing our souls out. Um, and so that's the reason we're asking for that additional person. That will help with trying to manage all this. This is high-risk stuff. If we make too many mistakes in a particular area, we end up in a suit with a contractor, we lose a grant or whatever. Uh, and again, it's not just engineering, we have, this is a collective effort. So um, beyond the regular activities, we're just asking to accelerate what Mike's already presented to you in terms of bringing on that engineering manager next year. Um, there is some concern, and I'll show you again when our projects are coming in next, next year, that we may even outstrip our abilities with that. And so we do have that Safe Bill contract, you've heard that name used before. We can plug into that if we have to, to get some additional assistance on some of the works. That's the plan. We are doing, we're also doing the water system plan update. In fact, I just sent email to the uh junk, the firm, R H two, the same one that's been working with us to update just before this meeting today. So you'll be seeing that coming up as a new contract. Um, we're continuing to develop the G I S information infrastructure. Um, Rob, the stormwater engineering technician that we brought on, has actually done a lot of work in G I S, a lot of work in development review, a lot of work in inspection. And we're trying to get him to do a lot of work in stormwater, but he's just got his, we've got our hands full. He's doing that, but there's a lot on there too. We're looking at collecting more and more data on our system and putting it into G I S so we can make intelligent decisions, so we can do grant funding requests even more quickly and more effectively. And then even managing just the city overall. That's, that's part of the effort um that we'll be looking at. We have this aerial contract, we're gonna fly the city again. You'll be seeing that coming into council at this next meeting. It's more expensive than we expected, we're doing a larger area than we have in the past. Um, but that'll be, that'll be nice to have that um in place as well. Major construction projects next year. Well, number one, we're gonna, that's continuing, well, number two. Southwest Ridge Water Tank, we're looking at starting design on that. Waste water treatment plan upgrade design, um, we're starting on that. Construction of the phase two of our four bikes, that's the Fourth Street um and Academy Way cycle track. Uh, we have funding now for that to continue that already called a J Avenue. The Land Party Overlay project, we have funds for that. Um, that'll be next year. Southwest Area Truck Line Design and Construction, that's going to the McKernan Christiansen property. Cedar Road Avenue reconstruction in Damson, we're kind of surprised, we're told by our legislators that there's money in the till for us. So we weren't really planning on doing these, but it looks like it's coming. So we're bracing ourselves, okay? Uh, anyway, I, C Street, Myra, there's some minor activity there we're looking at. Ten Street Stormwater Project, that's a big one we wanna do just because we need to do it. And the stormwater money is there and available right now. Myra, or it's, it's starting to be, we need to do some applications as well. Myra Road, Rock Road, Myra Road, Rock. Um, and then I just got, we just got work today on some funding for our sidewalks program as well. So um, we have other projects coming up that may be next year. The Monjonia Overlay Project, well, number two, solar array, two thousand twenty lining out. I'm just gonna click, that's it. So you can see why we're asking for that additional person and maybe accelerating that if we can this year. It's, uh, it's a lot to track, it's a lot to be on top of. And we are, we are delighted to be able to do this, it's just a lot, so. Anyway, thank you for that. So that brings up the next fund, which will take about two minutes. Do you have any questions on this?
That's on fourteen on your first slide, I wanted.
Well, I got through it quickly, didn't I? Can we go to?
I have one.
I'm interested in being able to.
The two point two five F T E that Eric asked.
Yes.
Were those?
Okay, let me explain that. That, right now we have one point two five.
Were those part of that tree that we looked up with? Okay, that's all.
Yeah. And one thing that Robert didn't mention either, is there's some uh stormwater avenues coming in based where I feel we actually can move up.
Some of that over?
Uh, levels.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is our stormwater budget narrative. I, I've already, you have more notes on it than I'm gonna talk to. I'm just talking about the major items here. There's a lot more on the sheet I gave you. But effectively, this one point seven five F T is, one of those F Ts is actually working in public works as our stormwater field person. The other point seven five is our, is Rob, our stormwater engineering technician. I'd say about seventy-five percent of them is in stormwater, about twenty-five for engineering. That showed up as a twenty-five percent in the previous. However, the reality is he puts an awful lot of time outside of stormwater in reality, so. Um, the uh, really our mission is here is just to make sure that we're compliant with the utility, that that stormwater facility, the stormwater utility is functioning. Um, mentioned that. So we need to update our stormwater management plan. I think we just got it this morning at about two something in the morning because our contractor has not been very responsive on it and we're pushing. And we're trying to get that done. We need to conduct our public education outreach. We did a couple of pre-k events this year, which we're, Rob got involved in. Uh, public involvement participation program, we need to start ramping that up. The illicit discharge detection and elimination system. What the college has required us to do is kind of slowly move into the utility and this is the next big part for that. So they'll go out and be looking for places where people are putting stuff into store, into the stormwater facilities that are like oils and so forth, or too many fats or whatever. We track it down, tell them and hopefully don't have to find them, so. That's what that's about. Construction site stormwater, we're about to control, we're all involved in that already. Uh, again, each of these have lots of sub items, you can look on that um sheet that I gave you. Post-construction stormwater management, this is all part of the standard part of having a stormwater utility. And obviously we have the monitoring and T N P L compliance. And I'm just gonna, the only thing really here to note is that we got it up and running, we got our street sweeper. Um, we did get under NPDS permit coverage, so we are covered now, we're good there, we had those events. We also, Rob wrote a grant, got ninety thousand dollars for a capacity grant. We're gonna take that money, use it to fund operations, cause it can be used for capital and move our operations money into capital and use it on ten street, okay? It's kind of us, we asked them if we could do this, okay? So this is okay. Yeah, I'm planning on doing that. Standards update, um, we still haven't fully updated our standards compared to the new stormwater manual. And. Let's see.
That's it?
I'm sorry, that was really quick. So big, the big part of that project, of that effort will be maintaining everything we're doing, but also initiating that um I D D E P program. Okay, are there any questions?
Just for clarification, your ask is gonna be for one? The F T E?
Yeah, there is no change on the stormwater. The only change is on engineering, that's one additional person. And that was what we advanced as a part of that restructuring, so.
Is it one and a quarter?
What is that?
I thought it was one and a quarter.
No, just one. It's just the way, actually, that stormwater position is split seventy-five percent to stormwater and a quarter of engineering, that's why you see that. So, and, and we will take up the slack with our contractual Safe Bill groups, I'm sorry, as best we can. Um, if it gets to be totally overwhelming, you may see us waving a red flag or something, saying help, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Gordon. All right, Mr. Hartwig.
Okay. Uh. I'll just say this, my, my, my tentative retirement date is probably when my wife turns sixty-five, which is July of twenty-one. So that's what we're working at, that's what we're working for. Uh, I'll let it out right now. Uh, the, the, the two big things that I've been trying to do is get through the address file, get that organized so it can be scanned in and done right. Uh, I think I'm pretty much done with that. And now the next thing is to go with Rob and do a brain dump and let him, and just take him street by street, tell him this is it, this is what's here uh and when it was done and all that type of stuff for water, wastewater, storms, everything, and get all that city so he can put it in on G I S. Along with that, we will, all the photos of all the projects. All the photos of all the projects, and he can put that into GIS in the appropriate places. And at that point, it'll be complete. So, that's... And that will take time, but that will be probably next year's goal, is to get that complete before I end up leaving. Okay. I do support the building inspector. He mentioned it. You get people burned out because they're so overwhelmed with work, and you can't accomplish things, and you get frustration. And that's... I keep telling people, our city is just in this particular rotten position of being too small to have the money to fund positions that are really required, and yet we're big enough that we should have them. No, not quite big enough that we shouldn't have them. And every department is feeling that pinch, and that's why you see these things. And I'll just bring that. That's the issue. And, but anyway. Quiver rental. We have over 90 vehicles. We have one employee. I've been using the part-time employee and filling him in to help with ER to try to... We've been busy with... Don't blame anything. We've been busy getting these new cars online. We learned at this contracting issue that we need to be a little more specific in our requirements on our add-ons, and that so that we don't have to do a lot of work when you get them. So, the next bunch we get in three years, or I can't remember what the year is, we'll have that all spec-ed out, so that we get them ready to go. The... You'll see in your budget that the PD leasing and the outpayment you're seeing in the budget, and that's basically going to be about $60,000 a year. And then it'll be 120 roughly when we bring the next six on, and we have the 12 vehicles fully funded. And then we'll just be rotating that 120 every year from then on, and I think it's a positive program. I really do. And I commend Chief DeMaris for bringing that up and pushing that along. The... So, what we're looking at for purchasing next year is a flatbed pickup for parks. We're looking at a weed sprayer trailer, a water flatbed pickup. We're looking to replace a used dump truck, and because the other one we got, we can't get parts for anymore, that's the one that's down at the wastewater treatment plant at this time. John mentioned the water tender. The water tender is in terrible shape. You can't... They're... It's rotting from the inside out, and we can't hardly keep it from leaking anymore. If we're going to do that, we need to replace it somehow. So, that's on the list. Parks. We're adding a new park. You already know about Homestead, the park at the Veterans Park at Homestead. They're installing right now the playground areas. They've done a lot of sidewalk and concrete work in. And then hopefully this fall, we'll still have... We'll have the sod installed and so forth, so that'll be nice. The issues we have with... We're looking at hopefully getting funding next year for splash pad and different entrances at Lions Park. That will entail additional work. So, I'm not asking for any employee now, but be aware that those things will be coming. And the other thing that needs to happen, both parks, is there are significant increases and improvements needed for the irrigation systems. The north side of Lions Park needs a new system. We can't hardly keep it covered with water, and the center portion of Lions Park. Streets.
I have a question about parks. There was that... There's previously the Cascade Regulating Station or whatnot right off of 12. I'm curious just what's happening with that.
Nothing right now, but the plan is to... We're going to have to excavate out about 18 inches, bring in new saw, I mean, bring in new dirt, and just make improvements for that. But we haven't had to talk to you about that. Streets. We're planning on chip seal is Spitzemberg, Dalett, Lambert, and then also to do a seal of the multi-use path on the... The entire multi-use path on Woodland. That's the big ones in streets. And I'm just hearing the highlights, because the rest of it's just typical maintenance. Wastewater?
How's the new sweeper going?
Well, we're getting to be able to use it now. But we've had other things we've had to do, so we'll get... You'll start seeing it soon when the leaves start falling in that actually.
Cool.
Wastewater, just to let you know, the poplar trees are all down. They're not cleaned up, but they're all down. We're anticipating, hopefully... We're hoping that by the end of the year, that all that stuff will be gone. The things that need to happen, that would be funded by just our part of the budget, all the PLCs are original to the wastewater treatment plant. It's 20 years old or more. They... If they fail, they can't be fixed, so those need to be replaced. We're looking and trying to get a contract price for them taking over the entire operation of the wastewater treatment plant. Now that we've got the tree farm down, we want them to take over the whole farming operation, and then we're also looking for them to do not only the jetting of the sewer lines, but the TV and video inspection of the sewer lines and so forth. So, we're hoping to get a contract from them soon. We've been trying to get that. And then another thing that needs to be done next year is replace the bar screen. Bar screen is ahead of the inlet pumps and protects the pumps from the tank at larger degree. The other thing we're flanking and showing you this the other week, is the airlines that feed the SBRs, the actual working part of the treatment process, those big tanks. The airlines that feed it out are leaking, like the sieve. They're burying and they're rotting, and so we're looking at seeing if we can replace at least an airline, do it above ground through the top of the building and over the tank, do one tank a year, and see what's new to do there. Water. All the automated metering is installed. We're finding a few meters that didn't get done, and we're taking care of those as we go. That's installed. It's been operational. We've got fine-tuning a little bit, but I have heard many complaints from the front office, so we're moving on with that. Next year, I... We hired... We're in the process of hiring a new employee, as Sean mentioned. With that employee, we might be able to keep a team going and be able to proceed with replacing water services in Ohio Park. This is a significant project. The issue with that is we replace the water services on... In that large of an area with that many services, you basically have to roll it up. So, the following year, we're probably going to be wanting to do some work on Ohio Park. And then we also are going to try to get all the services replaced on Bellway and Alden and Sunset Villa. The other thing I would like to have, and I think it would be very important and key, is an in-house hire, and that would be to a utility of the three, or whatever we call a crew foreman, so that when we send out crews, we know who's boss, and they have their expectations and their training for what they need to do.
That's a full-time?
Yeah. That would just... Somebody in-house would fill that position.
Okay, got you.
I do want to say that the last two employees we hired have been fantastic. Dennis Anderson doing the job that Kevin Wolpert did, has done a great job. And then Lorenzo Coda is fantastic. He came over from Jacobs at the wastewater treatment plant, and very knowledgeable and very energetic and wants to learn more, so I'm very pleased with that. I'll entertain any questions. I wanted to meet Sean in time. The meter reader, what role does he have now? Is there... Well, don't get me wrong. We're still fine-tuning that. It's taken a bunch of time. Not only that, but we were down probably 20 to 30 homes that didn't have meters, and so we're catching data. So, I mean, they have water, and it will hit me. And so, we're catching all those. Down the road, his road will be...
Ernestine, no, that was serious. That's an accident.
Have you wondered about the purpose of that? That must have been a little... Facilities. Spots that aren't readable, that we have to...
I don't think we have spots that aren't readable. I think we've had some meters that weren't registering right or whatever, and we had to do those, do things like that. But I think every meter has been... I'm not hurting you, as long as...
We can balance a budget on those 40 years of those houses and that meter.
I know. And we were charging them. Can we backcharge?
Yeah, how far back?
No, no. I understand that, I mean, they got backcharged back to the date we installed it, but no, that would be just the...
Pretty good 20 years.
They can make payments.
We'll set up a payment plan.
Yes.
Ask for a City Hall.
I forgot to mention one other thing. We're getting a budget to have an engineering report on being able to... What would it take for us to provide auxiliary power for the City Hall police station? Our generator out there is worthless right now. Not because it's a bad generator, but it only serves purple plug... I mean, orange plugs, and that's all gone now. So, we have no backup power. So, we're going to have an engineer look at what it would take to get backup power to here, and we'll try to include the police station as well.
So, that means everyone can keep working if the power goes out?
No excuses.
Yeah.
Radio towers are working.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any questions on any of the areas?
I don't know where to begin.
Other than what some of these acronyms mean? Nope. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Okay.
And I'll cover my memo briefly. A lot of the expenses are staff, quote, for gasses, travel, and trainings, actually a little bit less because of the conferences that are actually very local in triceps and spoke ends will be cheaper. Lobbyists line item likely only increase $600 because that's for the year, because that's what's happening, and that's what the market rate is. As far as programming, we are looking at doing... We do participate in the Valleywide Micro Business Assistance Program, which was successful. We're going to propose a double funding of that to cover, constitute participants. The way it worked out, two were covered last year, although we only paid for one, but a local bank covered the other, but there were two college place businesses in that. We'll be able to cover that, because last year there was money put aside for, what's his name, that guy come out here to go study blue zones and stuff. So, when you look at that, it ends up coming out pretty much even. And then the other one is youth recreation program. The campfire camp, we got the attendance numbers back on that. Participation essentially doubled in that. We're... It was up to around 50 participants, so it was at capacity. So, United Ways willing to help us again on that. We are having active discussions with the school district and the city of Walla Walla about additional program and actions. I'm awaiting proposals back from both, and we'll be discussing that. The park and recreation board, I was hoping to have it by now, but there's still crunching numbers on that. As a side economic development-wise, there's a lot of leads we're chasing, and it's going to look to be pretty good on the villages of Walla Walla. There's stuff happening in Meadow Brook. I am trying to be very conservative, though, because just the way development trends are starting to peak nationally, I think there won't be a bit of a recession bump going into 2021. That's what leads to urgency of that Southwest Super Truck Line, because to be frank, we're trying to get the big box going before the bottom falls out a little bit. And that big box in general, if you look at Portland Business Journal, there's an article about them where it just further backs up their concern. So, yeah, that generally covers that. The stuff that directly affects me are those various lines, or keep them traveling train in for council members and mayor, CSPO, and that's just looking at those other things I mentioned, so.
All right. Do we have any questions? Mr. Peterson?
Quickly. And what we struggled with, because last year a little bit, and I think this is in your budget, is the not-for-profits that come in and are wanting grants. And I don't be toyed with, and I'm not sure that we formalize that, whether we have... I don't know, if we feel compelled to give to everyone that comes in, or whether we just set a fixed budget. And it's not necessarily a first-come, first-served, but if some of these things were...
At our discretion.
At our discretion throughout the year, but there is a cap on it, and not who just gave the last-best presentation, you know?
There is a financial policy that I've been working on specifically to address this, where it'll basically have a circuit breaker as far as when other things are funded, then we can see about doing that. To be perfectly frank, I've just been scrambling, given the fact that we have the finance draw through gap and stuff like that, but it is about written. So, as soon as I have some backup over through finance committee and get that in place, because I did find some best practices on that, where it'll benefit us.
No pressure, by the way. I just had to make sure.
Yeah. No, it's actually authored already. I'm just trying not to overload everyone with everything else going at it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, all of the requests that everyone talked about tonight are included on this, the 94 page?
In the 94 page for operations. As far as supplies and things like that, yes. As far as the staffing requests, to be perfectly frank on that, no. The one where it is included is, for instance, an engineer tech for stormwater, because revenue does cover that, and a partial tech grant management person for finance department, given the fact of all the grants that we're getting. What I'm trying to do is to get the capital side done, so I can understand where we're transferring money out of, to see what we can... The remaining parts we can refill.
So, where do we see... Because I'm just trying to scroll through here and get to like the bottom. Where do we see what, like, in a dream world, if we could afford everything, like, where do we have all of what they're asking for listed out as what the total expenses would be and basically what the gap is?
Okay, well, I'm going to get that as soon as... I'm going to compile all that, because I was just getting the requests lately here. I was just trying to get all of this in your heads as we're having the discussion later on, so I'll get that all in once.
Because it just seems like it can be solved with more revenue.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
It's a lot of headcount, too. It's five and a half heads.
The reason I'm trying to do this earlier is that I don't think it's good policy to have a discussion about the budget in the black box, where I just throw everything away. Look magically, it's done. So, as you're going to see that later on, you have this in the back of your head what the needs are, so.
That's good policy. Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions? All right. Well, I'll take care of item number two on our agenda.
Oh, boy. This rate.
Well, I'm going to go quick with these ones, because really, it's just... And they...
What? We can go?
Good night, young scene.
Thank you. Yeah. So, capital facility plan. I'm only going to really talk about the ones that are going on next year, because if you recall, because last year is the first time we did a really deep book form. It's going to go through essentially Public Works Committee again, and then we'll certify all projects. But I want to get this out here so everyone can see what the true need is. So, this... I'll get past a lot of this, because a lot of this is just according to essentially gas standards for local government, and then also work management actors. There's a lot of stuff we don't have to go over. in here, but just priority projects, Southwest Couch Place Lift Station. Uh, we estimate that's about five and a half million. What we're trying to position it for is that there are developers ready to start looking at turning dirt out there. So I'm trying to negotiate public-private partnership where private sector does that. But to make sure we get something that's actually solid infrastructure, long-term, we're paying for engineering and then we also acquired that property for the lift station. Uh, waste, uh, well, number one and two are four and six, depending on who's talking about it. There, there is additional, there is still money's rapping to spend because we did the pump test, then we have built the wellhouse for well one. Uh, and then well number two, it's essentially doing the drilling. They're fully, they've started, but then doing the wellhouse. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, essentially getting going on that with design because we are under the deadline. Essentially Department of Ecology is starting moving towards essentially the renovations by twenty twenty-three. Good news is we were able to delay some things because we bought the additional property adjacent, so instead of phase one, we had twenty-seven million dollars. Uh, by twenty twenty-three, it's now down to twenty, still a lot of money, but still something lost.
Seven million.
So, the, so I would say phase one A is two and a half million. Uh, because the phase one has about, goes up about leathery by the time we're done with the first part. Uh, Lampertie, Meadow Brook, uh, that's mainly being funded by Transportation Improvement Board Grant. We did get awarded Lampertie. However, we were not able to award that because of the building environment, it was higher than what the state wanted to see. So we're gonna come right out of the gate with the, I'm hearing, because it's in the same area, that likely we're gonna get Meadow Brook to do it at the same time because we put in another grant for that, so, uh, yep.
I was gonna let you finish your sentence, but I thought that we had to do that this year. They're okay for us to wait?
Yeah, because of the building environment. Uh, because the state has rules where if it's too high, they wanna be wasting money just to get money out the door, so. Uh, Ford Bikes Project, that's a continuous cycle track down forth from Davis to College. Uh, but with that, we get pedestrian street lamps along that corridor, so that'll happen next year. Uh, as you all are aware, from the press release, we did get the grant funded for the sidewalk project, uh, in the historic part of the city here, so that'll be going in. And then Lions Park, uh, although we aren't gonna be turning dirt next year, we're again still trying to fundraise through a variety of sources to fund that. Uh, so we're putting four hundred thousand toward again, it's out of that real estate excise tax two. We passed the Topen with the parks. Uh, to do that park correctly, it's two million dollars, mainly the splash pit's a big part of it, but then also separating the pond from the creek because there's all sorts of sediment issues and, uh, that's a high dollar item with that. So those are the priority, uh, projects. Again, a lot of the slides in here, uh, essentially, uh, are just so, it's already in the book form. Uh, as you can see here, here's us a breakout for the proposed twenty twenty, uh, and then twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this, this year in essence, uh, the highest expenditures are water and wastewater, but then as you do the six-year outlook, uh, pretty much the largest ones are streets and then wastewater and water. And, uh, high dollar items, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty, it's just shy of seventeen million if you look at every one. Uh, and then going out to the six-year gap, it's just shy of seventy. Uh, good news with that though is if you look from last year, it's down from eighty-two, so we're, we're getting it lower. Um, as, as you can see how we fund a lot of this is basically through grants, uh, where that's about thirty-four percent and then developer contributions. So lion's share of our capital program, uh, we're trying to get other people paying for it. So, and then we have prioritization. Uh, high means that it has to really happen no matter what medium, uh, is that it does need to happen at some point, but not the immediate concern. And then low is basically if we get a grant given to us, which has happened quite a bit. Uh, facilities, city hall, uh, again, just trying to keep our stuff up to date. So LED light conversion, we believe there'll be about fifty percent coverage where rebate from Pacific Power, floor replacement, uh, the front door on me, I go there's John mentioned, uh, doing some thermostat adjustments and then also window and exhaust fan issues. And again, I'm just covering twenty twenty stuff because otherwise the state's rolling on. Fire department, water softeners in there as well as the shower replacement. As you'll see as we go and tell these, so everyone understands where things are at. I have pictures of what we're doing, maps, and then also how we're gonna pay for it. Uh, police, uh, unexpectedly had to deal with the one chiller and looking at the other side, the other chiller is about just as bad. That's gonna need to be done with. Uh, also the carport storage project was, um, much higher than anticipated once we went out and got, uh, final prices on that and then the gate issue. Infrastructure, Lions Park, you can see that, two million. Uh, it's a smorgasbord of funds, they actually get that going. Uh, we're gonna try again for state recreation conservation office. Uh, there's various organizations looking to help fund it, also impact fee, REIT and incurring expense, so it's a variety of things. Uh, Colas Park Irrigation, trying to grapple with that system. Uh, as far as that Lions Park one, we, uh, work on irrigation as part of that overall work as well. Twelfth Street Parkway, uh, which we were discussing earlier, uh, I do have earmarked about ten thousand to, uh, make it look like a little bit of a nice parklet because right now it's gravel, the fence is not great shape, so that'll help get that going. And then harvest, uh, those parks, this is in our Park Master Plan, uh, just basically improving that with signage, picnic shelter, things like that. And as that park plan, the council as well as park board approved about two years ago. And then there's other things as the years continue. Uh, it's also broken up into full corridor projects. Full corridor means not only is a new pavement, but then water super storm. So Cedar Avenue, uh, we're being told the, uh, there's breathing in for a legislative appropriation next year for that. Uh, we did go for it this year, but the Senate, uh, didn't have the votes to get it through. Uh, we believe there, uh, we're being told that there is the votes for, uh, next year for both Cedar and Damsun, so that is what we are pushing for, uh, to get both those streets done. And again, that's us full, these are full corridor one streets where we are replacing stuff underneath, uh, are in other sections. So those storm projects, Tenth Street, Birch to College, uh, you know, wood curb in there and tree that's smaller, I have a drain to a, a tree, a tree drain into a green one. We have a storm warning utilities, a good one, uh, so dealing with that. And now some municipal outfalls. Uh, our stormwater consultant developed out a whole list of outfalls essentially it fixed. And in there, we've just placed where every year we start dealing with an outfall. And then in that sport, in essence, uh, the storm program, and there's other things for the next years beyond that, but again, I'm just going over twenty twenty's stuff. Uh, Chip Seal Project, our REIT one, real estate excise tax one revenues, just fully fund that every year. So this is a breakout for now, what we're gonna do each year in twenty twenty, it's Spitzemberg, Lambert, and then Nella. Ford Bikes, uh, getting the headlights in that corridor. Uh, there's a complete street grant, uh, we obtained for five hundred thousand, that's in our coffers already, they will, uh, take care of the lion's share of that. And then Lampertie Meadow Brook, we have the grant for Lampertie, awaiten messaging on Meadow Brook.
And how much will we need to pay for that of the six nineteen?
Uh, of, of the six nineteen altogether, uh, it ends up being, I would say probably about like roughly seventy thousand-ish locally between both. Uh, Woodman in large, uh, that is funded by essentially developer, the, uh, the initial contribution, which would be for the flash and stop signs like what we have over at Twelfth in large. Uh, however, a couple of years down the road, uh, there was a study done about two years ago, it said that a stoplight needs to be put in by the traffic counts that they predict in twenty twenty-three and beyond, so they'll be a late project. Uh, Myra Road Rock, if anyone bicycles up on the north end, uh, or goes up there, you will see that the wood chips are just flying off the thing. And believe it or not, we actually own a section on Myra Road, a lot of folks don't know that. The part between Electric Avenue and then the railroad tracks, we, uh, wood chips are flying off and it does not give a good impression, so if we put rocks down, it's more expensive, but it's a one-time thing. And, uh, rocks are expensive, so we're trying to, uh, really refine the cost. We think it'll get started, likely it will be more if we continue working on that. Uh, Central Couch Place Sidewalk Project in this grant application, uh, Walla Walla University gave us the right of way we needed, uh, to do this, so thanks to them, we got that done in the front end. Uh, so Davis between Woodman and Third over on the east side, uh, bade, uh, various segments on the west side of that, and then Twelfth Street, we already have the right way on, they have the, it's college evade. Uh, and we believe we can do successful applications to that CVBG program through the state every other year, it seems like, so.
Those grants then, is the four sixty-four supposed to cover those four or do you need all four, three of those to cover those four?
No, uh, the four sixty-four covers.
Should be for those four. And then Bill, we can hopefully, if we're awarded those, select other streets.
Exactly, yep. Uh, and then Myra, C Street, Myra mainly has to do with signage, but just dealing with some of the stuff over that intersection. We had a study done about some recommended improvements last year, so making some of that come to life. And then trying just to put a new surface on Evans, uh, because the pavement, that's pretty messed up over by the lung industrial facility in town, so just trying to resurface the top of that. And then this goes into stuff for the next couple of years, so I will. Okay, wastewater, uh, treatment plant, it's expensive, a lot of money going into it, don't really have much of a choice with that, so that's just a breakout on what it is. So wrap up tree farm removal. Uh, we may, I was starting to worry a lot more that was gonna go into next year. I'm starting to think that may not, we may wrap it up sooner, but then dealing with how the works and just getting on the schedule with the state, uh, so they're okay with us. Uh, Southwest Couch Place Truck Line, wrapping up engineering, uh, and then working with various developers or other agencies to make that become a reality in the old convey sewage for all South Couch Place. Uh, wastewater lining, we're, uh, gonna be starting that this year, but really every year we're trying to, we wanna try aligning stuff because it's cheaper. You basically cook a pipe inside the pipe and that way you don't have to dig it up, so. Yeah, so, so there's various segments we're gonna be trying to work on over the next several years, so it just helps with maintenance. Um, and then those, and that was the key projects for twenty twenty there. And then to get to water, uh, wrapping up well number two, well number one, the solar array, uh, we did not get the state grant money. Uh, I'm hearing that there were very few applicants to the Pacific Power Grant though, so I believe we will get that. Uh, and then also starting to do engineering for a storage tank, uh, because typically it's gonna have about forty-eight hours of storage capacity for water. We don't have that at the moment, plus we're developing, it makes sense, so, uh, starting to do the engineering, but after water system plans, since they'll save where the opportunity areas are and then figure out what we need to do for water storage. And then there's a host of other projects as the years go in, but that is a very quick summary of that.
I was gonna say, thank you for that table ad.
And there's also a spreadsheet table as well, then four blocks.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Good job, Mike.
Thanks.
Yeah, very good job.
Do we have any questions on any of those? None? Okay, then might be moving on to the equipment replacement plan.
So this is summarizes everybody's equipment, right? So rentals and everything.
Exactly, I, I tried to do both ones, not just for capital, but then also equipment replacement and information technologies.
But most of this we've heard already.
Yeah. Yeah, keep going, keep going. Just a summary of what we did this year, so you can take a look at that. Uh, we have the breakout for twenty twenty and then the next six years. Our prioritization, same as capital facilities. Okay. Uh, for administration, uh, really it's dealing with the generator issue here in city hall and the whole municipal campus, uh, getting the engineer going so we know what we need and then the following year, get what we need there. Once we actually have a report of what it is we need, there are actually quite a few grants, so I believe we'll be able to get that paid for, but you need the engineering first, so, uh, that's what we need. Uh, then fire department, every year you have taryon replacements, the SCBA's, which are essentially the air tanks. Uh, the thing we are gonna try to fund is that water tender, uh, because it's from, it's old and rusty and barely running, so, uh, and although we did create that mobilization this year, the previous year, uh, we made enough money to cover that, so.
That water tender, that's the same water tender that we're driving out to assist other communities?
From time to time, yeah.
Yeah. So that isn't a lack of funds this year, thankfully, because of the lack of fires, but...
We talked about just getting more duct tape, I thought.
The potential for lost, the potential for lost rodent in the future with the tender is not to be...
Yeah, yeah, because we'd be able to make it reliable.
Couple of yellows.
Yeah, because they, they try to like weld some of the rust areas, show them, uh, they try to put this like polymer hoop thing in that doesn't work either, so it's...
I hate to be the property that that thing pulls up to when it's not.
Uh, police, our leases continuing that, it's been a good thing, so keep going.
Are we getting more next year?
Uh...
I thought I read that we are, but it's in three years?
Yeah, it, there's like a three-year gap and then it's a rotation. Uh, parks division, replacing a pickup, we have a very old pickup there, so getting that going and then later on want more stormwater, uh, reactor, so, uh, really trying to put away funds so that way next year we could get the actor, very expensive luckily because we are a hardship community, uh, and the way revenues are trending, we'll be working towards that. Uh, street division, straight tray, spray trailer for next year. And then twenty twenty-one, uh, a dump truck over there, the dump truck we're gonna replace this upcoming years over in the water division. And then working toward accelerating so we could replace the grader as we were trying to fund, the fully fund equipment replacement. Historically, the grader was left off the radar, however, with snowstorms and the fact that it's from the mid nineteen seventies and we had to scramble to get extra parts last year when we had our snow situation, we need to figure that one out, so. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, that is, that's a big question mark right now, we're trying to get the answer to because that's a high dollar item if we are to keep it internally. Uh, look at what some other cities do, Jacob's group who operates our treatment plant, they can get a much better deal, getting the equipment in the private sector, plus there'd be an opportunity in talking with City of Walla Walla, since they also operate their treatment plant, potentially do some sharing, so I'm really hoping they can get some numbers to us and get that going because...
Yeah, if that doesn't work, we're, we're looking at replacing some high-dollar vehicles. If that doesn't work, we're looking at replacing some high-dollar vehicles, right away.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm basically trying to pull my eggs in the basket. Jacobs needs to get their numbers to us. And then next year, a plant and then dump truck. And then there's other needs as we go through the upcoming years and you'll see pictures of that. So that is the synopsis of equipment replacement.
My quick question, on the utilities trucks, I guess I'll call them that, there's no provision or no opportunity to lease? Is it not the same business model?
We could look at that for leasing. We just haven't.
Because the justification was it's a big capital punch versus an opportunity you expect.
I mean, it can be looked at, yeah.
Yeah, we could look at that. I did look at it a little bit for fire vehicles and it completely was upside down doing it.
I would think some of the specialty trucks, it would make sense, but if you're buying a pickup truck or something like that, you want to lease that, I think.
Yep. If we use the grader for snow type stuff, there might be seasonal demand, which would make it maybe more complicated, or be more costly.
Yeah. Well, yeah, the road grader thing, I think it's one of the things for that, we need to essentially take the hit in the end because it's not like you replace those all the time. I mean, we'd have that for decades. It's just that you need to have it when you get the freak snowstorm and plus we have gravel alleys around here and in some areas and it helps with that.
I'm sorry, I need some clarification on the snow removal. So do we have a, right now we have a, what type of vehicle do we have for snow removal?
The primary vehicle for snow removal is a grader.
The grader and we have, we have one?
Yes, we have one, but it's a 1976, so you can't get parts for it.
Okay.
So we're looking at buying a used grader.
1977?
Then we have, we have the ability with the blade on front of the dump truck and on the back of it. Those are our backups.
Okay, thank you. Just because, you know, they're predicting us maybe a longer and rougher snow season coming up, so.
God, can be.
I'm not worried about it, but I mean, at some point, we need to address that, that's right.
Yeah, no, my reason I didn't put it here this year is because in looking at how we were funding equipment replacement, that just was never included in the replacement. So we're basically going to have to play catch-up on the at this year and the next year to do that. Okay, information technology plan, keep going, keep going. Existment environment, essentially we're all down here. We're just trying to essentially keep the computers on the various replacement schedule, seven-year replacement schedule, because we have warranties that last seven years and then there is no warranty passout time. We may have like catch-ups several years ago because they were units at workstations that were like 14, 15 years old and very sluggish. And then our server downstairs, that is due to be replaced next year as well. And then we'll be looking at the potential of essentially putting a server room eventually when we essentially deal with the salary port because that's just a bad idea to have electric. I mean, luckily we aren't in a floodway, but that just really hits me the wrong way even when moisture sensor happens, stuff in the basement. This gives you, this gives you a timeline of where we're going expense-wise. It's gone up and down and it'll basically go up and down as various things expire. What's driving across this year is our server needs to be replaced. And then in addition to that, our proportional share of the server over at Lastcom, which does dispatch, needs to be replaced at the same time naturally. So we're basically doubling server replacements. Complete projects, a lot of software, trying to really improve our efficiency, keep going. 2028 expense, you'll see it divided between the various functions, between administration, which includes finance, between development, fire, police, and public works, keep going. And then do the same breakout for our six-year period, keep going. Prioritization, same as the other plans, keep going, keep going. Hardware, replace the server, also server room planning, we have the dispatch issue. And then we now have in here a funded computer replacement plan, I keep them, they have a schedule, primary issue, hardware. What we try to do is we have forfeited proceeds, budget is pretty small, it's about, it ranges anywhere from $16,000 to $20,000 a year, depending on the year. And it basically comes from essentially the court, is various court cases going through. For part of that, it's every year trying to get one of those iPod for units in a certain place in town. Because that thing is a lifesaver, you can zoom really far away. Actually, as they were training on it at Lyons Park, they caught a drug deal in progress. So it works.
I heard a lot of municipalities are moving away from the body cameras now.
It varies, it really varies. It depends who you get as the supplier for the, well, this is security cameras. And a couple of years down the line, we are potentially looking at body cameras. It's really talking with the vendors and then also finding whether our neighboring cities do, Tri-Cities do use them. It's all about having proper staffing and then getting grants for it. So I'm just putting in there something we're looking at, just so you can see the grader.
But this is outdoor security cameras, correct?
Yeah, the iPod for is not body camera. Those are stationary security cameras.
And right now we just have the one at Lyons Park?
In Kewa.
Oh, we have the two.
We have Kewa's Park by the restrooms over there.
That's right.
And then we have Lyons Park.
And the one at Lyons Park, do we need to, those are, have the ability to have satellite cameras. So the one at Lyons Park can't get everything. So we would anticipate that we would add a satellite camera over maybe by the picnic shelter and over by the baseball diamond that can catch, then we can catch everything apart.
And those cameras to get a brain unit is about $8,200, but to get the little satellite cameras that can read the signal off the brain unit is only about $400.
Okay.
Yep, so that is the goal with those stationary cameras next. Software, Lyons share what we're paying for is software maintenance because we made a lot of good changes in the past couple of years, some Word docs, business analysts online, they have moved away from Buxton to where we go run our own reports and that saved a lot of money and it has unlimited report running ability, the website, Bias, Questica, doing the finance with the new finance director, we'll be looking at getting that up and going. And then document locator, which is essentially paperless accounts payable, and then express bill pay, which allows utility payments online. New proposals, really trying to look at doing Neo-Gov, a lot of folks in the public government sector, that's where folks find out about jobs from through Neo-Gov. And then also essentially the software track time and attendance and move away from paper. And then in order to do that, do the integration with Bias. Bias is an interesting financial software program. I like it because it's secure. The only problem is running reports from it and doing other things, it's a little clunky because the history of Bias is it's actually a lentil farmer out of Oakstale who wrote it in his spare time, so.
A lentil farmer?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, Oakstale. So when that program has backups, you basically have to call Wes and then he tries the program and then figure it out. So it's both in the fact that you can hack into it because there's other softwares I use like in Colfax that had a major gap in it, but it's a little clunky and old school, so. Okay, nice. We don't have an in-house IT person. We contract out to in Mountain Education Service District. We increased coverage some time ago because for a long time, our building official, Larry Bowman, he actually had like three jobs and one where he was like the facility manager, building official, and the IT director, and that wasn't really working. So we bumped additional hours into the IMESD contract. So that's what us may cost us and they serve several cities and school districts.
Very good.
And then we also are members of GIS Consortium with Association of Washington Cities. We get 45 consultant hours with that, plus best practices, open data portal, development of apps. And then if we have any additional projects, we basically get about 50% off their hourly discount off their hourly rate we're flowing on a lot of this. So it's good and over time we're getting more and more people that are trained up in GIS, which is a good thing, so. And that is the synopsis of that.
Okay, any questions on the information technology? All right, so moving on to the 2020 state and federal legislative.
This is the state one matters more than.
Okay.
Don't put that in the minutes.
So with fiscal year 2020 with the state one, it's really just making tweaks to what was in the one from last year. So economic development incentive program in the state still doesn't really exist. We're still the only state that does have like tax improvement financing. And there was a proposal to bring a business ecosystem, the last two years and it failed. The person who stopped everything now is no longer House Speaker, so they actually think there's opportunity next year, finally get it to pass. So that's a big one. U.S. Highway 12 as well is another. Also making sure to try to keep down the unfunded mandates, things like that. And then fully funding MRSC because anytime there's a budget crunch, they always threaten to take away money, even though it's actually redirected money from cities, so it isn't really their money to take away, but it always comes up. Funding additional, county for basic law enforcement. They did not add enough of the classes, they were essentially supposed to double it, instead they only added like about four of them to help, but there's backlog. Also helping with fire funds as well and then deal with the opioid epidemic. And then the four projects we're really trying to bug the state legislature with is wastewater treatment plant because it's very expensive, street improvements, Cedar and Damsun, we believe that will be funded by appropriation, we just have to keep them front of them. South College Place, the wastewater trunk line, if there is an issue, is we develop the public-private partnership, see if we can get some gaps to fill that up as well as the park property likely will go out there. And then the giant Lyons Park rehab as well. So those are the top projects. And then the federal one essentially looks at stuff from Oregon, the Acrolyte, but looks pretty similar to, so. So that's that. So if you have anything to add to it, let me know, but otherwise, we're going to try to position this so we can get this essentially adopted by early November because since the legislative session only goes like 60 days next year because it's an election year and they try to get in and out quick. We have to get all this in front of them really early to stand a chance to get all our stuff funded, so.
When is C Street projected to be looking better?
Well, they're working, top course on the first section, what I call phase one, College Avenue, two, Damsun. They want to get that, last I heard is they might be paid.
Oh, great.
That would be, right now would be the first lift. And then, and then they'll keep going and hopefully maybe get Damsun as well very soon after that. And then they'll keep going and we'll see where they're going.
So there's cautiously an end in sight.
For the asphalt plant.
Possibly, I would not hold my breath.
At some point it will be done.
Again, apart from college to Damsun, I can see.
I think College at Damsun has about 99% chance of getting done. The part from Damsun to large, that's a whole nother thing. I think a lot of the underground work will get done in curbing and putting down ground holes as far as asphalt goes. Typically they close the plants as the temperatures fluctuate in November, so I'd be shocked if they finish that.
Just a comment is, Damsun itself may remain gravel up to Damsun, asphalt.
So you guys are talking this year, will be completed at some point?
Yeah.
Because that really was my question, when will it be completed? And you say maybe, and I'm like, we're just going to walk away?
Well, the asphalt plants typically reopen in March and with that last segment, I think we could get that done. If it doesn't delay out that long, hopefully like May-ish, I would.
I would hope so. That would be one of the first aid projects.
I have a general question regarding the proposed budget changes. And it's just, again, going back to the snow removal. And the only reason I'm asking it is because somebody else, I think it was in Walla Walla, said, make sure you look at your snow removal budget because last year I guess they exceeded theirs quite early. And since we're expecting a rougher and longer snow time, and I see our budget has slightly increased, but supplies stayed the same, so are we, did we do okay last year?
We've done okay for the last 20 years. I've eliminated overtime and so we, my guys go right on shift work if we have to plow, so we don't go overtime. Our budget will be fine.
Will be fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
No problem.
No problem.
I will say, I will say when I first started here, I was skeptical in that argument. I haven't been here three years now. Paul, you were really good. We were the only one of all at the city managers meetings when everyone was like significantly underwater. We were the only one that wasn't having a problem, so.
No, Norma, it's always interesting, year's after year, not college, but I'm not speaking of college based right now, but just generally, if it's a mild winter, you never hear anybody hell about all the excess money that they have, you know? Yeah. It's a bad one, it's like, oh, your bus is destroyed. It's like, it's a little.
Shocking.
I don't know if I'm just a little sensitive to it, coming from a city where a mayor literally lost their job for lack of, preparing for snow removal.
The initial problem was the old hand that carried it down for a while.
Yeah, that's what happened over there. All right, that was just a side joke.
We're skipping winter this year.
All right, any other questions on any other budget items for whoever's still remaining? If not, then we can call this meeting for October 3rd to an end. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for remaining and presenting, and ladies for doing what you always do.
Thank you, guys.